It's a big crowd. Welcome to the December 18th, 2014 zoning board of appeals. We have some changes tonight. Not the fact that just we're missing two members.
Not a permanent change. You're talking about Lindsey?
Lindsey, yes.
Yeah, Lindsey is just temporary.
Lindsey's temporary. So we have a temporary secretary because many of you know that Nicole is no longer with us. She has taken a position with the town as a firefighter. So if I can just, you know, get the old pulpit going here for the benefit of the few that are in the room, but mostly for the benefit that people are watching, because I do know, I've had people say that they have watched our meetings online, and we're always glad to have the company in the room with us. But for those of you who are watching at home, Nicole was with the zoning board for, I mean, the building department for 11 years. And when I think about the work that she did, I'm reminded of a quote from Harry Truman. It's amazing, something to the effect, probably not exact, but it's amazing what can be accomplished when you don't worry about who gets the credit. And that certainly is true of Nicole. She shepherded hundreds, if not thousands, of applications, both for the zoning board of appeals, but for permits for work in town, answering questions from applicants, answering questions from neighbors, from abutters, from people who are just looking for information, a valuable part of a great board, excuse me, not a great board, but a great department. And it's great to see that she's going on to something I think that she worked certainly very, very hard for, and we wish her well. I don't think anybody can understate what she was responsible for and the great job she did to keep track of deadlines, to keep track of applications, who needs to be where, what, when. She did a great job, and we, I know as a board and as a department, thank her for her years of service to the town and, you know, wish her well. Hopefully, you will get the chance to see her in her new position. And I suppose maybe hopefully not, since she's on the fire department.
She'll be working the ambulance, just so everybody assumes what we're talking about.
She'll be as competent there as she certainly was here, and that's all that can be said. And, you know, so her cousin, right? Her cousin Lindsey is filling in tonight. We will eventually get a new secretary.
Eventually. Very well spoken, and, you know, we certainly all second that, and well deserved.
Do I have a motion to declare this Nicole Harris Knight?
Yeah.
You could have a resolution.
A resolution.
Okay.
Proclamation.
I'll let you do it. You probably worked with her longer than anybody.
Probably, but I would...
Well, anybody on the board.
Certainly have a resolution acknowledging Nicole's efforts on behalf of the board, and in a larger sense, on behalf of the town, in the building department, and appreciate her time and wish her well on her future endeavors, continuing to serve the people of the town of Sichuan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. That's our first.
We even have people in the audience.
She's great.
Sounds great.
First resolution I think this board has ever voted, so.
There we go. That's a good one. All right. We do have a continuance tonight, right?
I believe so.
Correct.
Why don't we start with that, in case anybody's here on that? And I'll let you read that into the record.
She'd be right on the top of the file there.
Stockbridge one?
Stockbridge, yes.
Is there any hope, Neil, that that's going to be resolved in the beginning of the year?
Fifteenth.
January?
Yeah, they want to put it on January 15th.
Neil, this letter?
That's it.
Dear Mr. Treides, members of the zoning board of appeals, the applicant is seeking to continue again the meeting of the zoning board on the above referenced matter from December 18th, 2014 until the first January meeting in 2015. The plan revisions were completed and will receive John Chessie's comments on Monday. He is requesting some additional changes which we feel necessary at further meeting. We also, we are also willing to extend the time for the acting on our recent request for the time of the next meeting of the zoning board of appeals in January 2015. Kindly advise that this written request is sufficient. Thank you for your assistance for this matter. From Robert Kugler.
Very good. So if anybody's here on Stuckridge Woods, that's continued until January, well, it will be in a second. Do we have a motion?
Move to continue the applicant, at the applicant's, at the applicant's request until the next January meeting, 2015.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So January 15th is the next meeting for, and that will be continued. Very good. Okay. Our next application.
39 Bayberry Road.
Okay, so you get to read, you get to read the request.
Basically, the publication.
Yeah.
Hearing before the, I'll give it a shot. How's that? The, we have an applicant from Dennis Baylog and Robert Demers of 39 Bayberry Road who requested Mass General Law's 48, Section 6, special permit finding to add second floor to a pre-existing non-conforming garage accessory to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 39 Bayberry Lane.
Come on up.
Approximately three and a half years ago.
First of all, can you just identify yourself?
Sure. I'm Robert Demers, and from 39 Bayberry. Approximately three and a half years ago, we came before you all and had a proposal for a two-car garage with a room over it and a walkway pergola and a room extension. So let me just reference, let's see, kind of get an idea of what it's called. We have the, we have the two-car garage now, so, and this pergola through the house and in this room, trying to be extended. The plan is, the closing today is to have a one-car garage, use the existing garage that we have, and do a room over the garage, and to have, for some helical piles. So that's what the existing garage looks like.
I'm sorry, you said you had approval, what?
For helical piles, rather than...
Why?
Screws.
Okay.
Screws.
Screws that go onto the ground.
Gotcha.
So we've already done that, and you give us the permit for that. So what we want to do now is just do, use the existing structure and then do the room over it. So it's really downsized quite a bit.
So to clarify, we granted permission to raise and reconstruct the existing garage in the past.
That's right.
But that work was not done?
Yeah, we decided after getting numerous proposals for it that it was going to be quite expensive, so we abandoned it, abandoned that project, and then thought we would just downsize by doing what we're doing, what we're proposing to do now.
The one, the application you had several years ago in 2011, you were going to be moving the garage at that point?
We're going to tear it down.
Right, but moving it. Because when I read the decision, in fact, I had asked Maureen, did the old file come up to you now? No, we have the decision, but I asked for the file. I don't think she could probably, maybe she couldn't find it. Because you were moved, it was definitely getting moved at that time, right?
Well, I did review that, and that's one of the reasons I, because we had considered just letting them go ahead and do it because, you know, it would fit within the, you know, the intent of the decision. But they were moving it, I don't think it was much more than six inches, that was my recollection. It was a very, do you recall how much?
It was very minor.
It was very minor, yeah, it was just to...
Yeah, let's move forward.
Also, Ms. Dennis Baylog, all of our neighbors now are on board. They weren't on board last time, but this time.
Did we get any comments from any of the neighbors? Any letters? Sometimes we do get the support or...
At least they told me they were.
I'm sure they are.
If they're not here tonight, we're probably going to...
One of the concerns I have, gentlemen, is that the map that you have provided us is not a certified lot plan. It hasn't been signed off by Mr. Cavanaro. It, we don't have, we don't have the, you know, the setbacks on the lot line here.
Do we have one or not? That's it.
That's what that means? I have no, why would, it still isn't certified, so you've got to get a, you've got to get a certification for us.
So is this...
If I may, I think a lot of times, you know, they'll make copies without the stamp, all this requires is a stamp. I recall seeing this, we went back to the original file, and this, there'd be no reason that would change from the original file.
Do we have one in? That's why I asked for the original file.
Yeah, we do. But it's easy enough for them to get a stamp before they come in for the building permit. And I also want to just make another comment. This is far less, this is much, much smaller. The way the decision was written, they could have built a two-story garage 40 feet in the air, and two, I think it was two-car?
Yes, yeah, two-car.
Two-car. Two-story. It's just a single car with a little storage up over.
Oh, good, oh, good, good.
That is a stamp, yeah?
Well, I don't know if that's...
Oh, yeah, here it is.
Yeah. That's a stamp for building permit. They're looking for a stamp.
Can we just move that from one file to the next?
Huh?
Can we just move it from one file to the next?
Yeah.
It probably has some of the same, we just have to ask them.
It has a stamp on it.
It's somewhat relevant. I think the applicant, if we move forward on this, with this application, this, the applicant could have this plan stamped and submit it with the, for the building permit.
Can I add one more thing to the, I know you need it perhaps to write the decision, but the footprint of the existing garage is proposed to stay exactly the same, so nothing's going to move.
Okay. The only, and the other thing that I noticed before, talked about what we, what do you plan to do with this room?
It's unheated, it will have electricity, and it's basically going to be storage.
No plumbing, no heat.
Okay.
We don't have basements.
Okay. Because I think the, one of the conditions last time, it was not, especially, I think we were concerned about the proximity to the other garage, that it would not be converted at any time to livable space.
Correct.
Are you okay with that, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we mention, though, that they, they want to put a bathroom out there?
I don't think, why would you need that for storage?
Yeah, no, I mean...
But I, no. No bathroom, no...
I don't object, you know, I agree, John, I'm not, it's not something I would necessarily, if you want us to prohibit it, we can prohibit it. But if, but if we simply say no living space, then it can't be converted to a living space and accessory dwelling. But that doesn't mean it couldn't have a toilet out there if you wanted to, if you were using the garage as a workshop, and, you know, or a small office space that you were, you know, I don't see any reason that one should not have the ability to have a toilet and a sink.
But isn't office space livable space?
No.
No.
I mean, in office space, no, absolutely not, because, no.
I could live in my office, I do, beautifully.
No, this is... You don't have two egresses required in an office, you don't need to have smoke detectors in an office necessarily. No, it's not, and it would be illegal if they did that. But I think it's an allowed accessory use in an accessory building, office, workroom.
Workroom, toilet, I mean, you could have a shower there without, it would still be within the, within the limitations that we want.
Right.
Without, to avoid having it become a habitable space which can be rented and expand upon the, the use.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think we can do that with a statement as opposed to limiting everything.
I think we just, yeah, simply say it can't be converted to livable space, leave it as broad as possible.
You could use the word sleeping room, something like that. Again, yeah, there's many ways to characterize it.
Neil, do you have any other comments?
No, I just want, I think it's, you know, we were just trying to cover the bases, and, you know, there was some thought that they could move forward with the decision they already had, but that I decided it wasn't my decision, and so they're here before the porch just to make sure, you know.
This is almost covered within the last decision, really.
It's a lot smaller than the last one. So I think it's, be supportive of it.
Now, my files had this in it.
What is that?
That Bayberry Road will need to file with conservation. I don't know who wrote that.
Oh, we, we've gone through, Patrick, he's getting his approval, just so you know.
Okay, good. All right.
Just by way of...
Before they get a build, well, they actually, they're using the same structure, I mean, if it's, if it's, no, if it's, I haven't looked at, they can build on top of it, they wouldn't have to go back to Patrick, because they went to Patrick for the helical piles, so they're not touching the ground. But, you know, if they get into, you know, repairing anything that's on the ground, they would have to go back, yes. But we have a primary review process that would pick that up.
Okay. So that's not our concern, anyway. Just wanted to let you know, somebody wrote it on my copy here, it was not me, so. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to be heard on this application? Okay.
I just clarify a point. The, was a building permit pulled from, in conjunction with the original application? Is that why the columns have been put in? Or were they...
I'm not sure. I think it was maybe settling.
Yes, it was settling.
So you were...
I think they probably made the decision not, that they didn't want to do the brand-new one and trying to maintain the building.
So the application, the, the decision we made before, or this board made before, is more than two years old. So it would technically not be usable right now?
Well, it's been extended by the...
The applicant has extended it?
If, if, if the application was filed before, or decision made before August 2012, I think they're automatically extended.
Okay. That's, I'm just, so basically, the applicant is before us with a valid permit to do something that's much larger, and asking us to weigh in on a much more conservative application and grant the relief requested. Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Move to grant the applicant at 39 Bayberry Road, and comes to, you're not raising and reconstructing, you're adding a second floor to a pre-existing non-conforming garage in conjunction with the plan submitted by Cavanaro Consulting.
No, that's, you can't, that's, that's even way outdated before this. And this is just a site plan, you don't really have a plan for it.
No, but it's the only plan we have that...
No, we got this one.
No, that's...
Yeah.
No, that's not the one. This is, where's the other one? That's in the file.
Right here.
Yeah.
There's a building plan here, if you want to look at the profile.
Okay. All right, so...
Basically, we're also within the existing footprint.
It's within the existing footprint, as shown on the Cavanaro Construction Plan dated 5/9/11.
Yeah, let's use that. Then you don't have to worry about getting another site plan.
This is, this is the proposed addition with the two family. This is the one that...
Well, usually the existing, you could use the existing conditions.
But it, I think this complicates the matter.
Okay.
The one that, the one that is, this one before us...
It'll be the EC.
Is the easiest one, the EC drawing dated 12/110.
It's not stamped, I don't think we can use it. I don't feel like we can use it. We can't reference it.
I would just suggest a solution that, if you simply refer to the existing footprint on the, on the stamped plan, they have an existing footprint, correct?
That's what I said, yeah. There is.
I'll go back a little bit.
Okay.
Move to grant the relief requested by the applicant to, to add a second floor to an existing non-conforming garage as shown on a plan by Cavanaro Construction dated 5/9/11, and a plan by Paul Bonarigio, Bonarigio dated 10, excuse me, 11/10/14, with the stipulation that the second floor shall not be used as sleeping dwelling area.
I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd move to amend it to say living space.
Living space.
Yeah, just kind of broader.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For, how about for living spaces other than allowed accessory uses? Because living space is not allowed accessory use, something like that.
Say that again, Neil?
I mean, just so a future building inspector doesn't misinterpret it, living space other than allowed accessory uses.
That's, I have no problem with that. That's a good way to amend it, yep. Can we keep these?
Yes, you may.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Then we'll just keep these. You can have your designs back and your, and your photos.
I'll see yours.
Let's see what we need, maybe, if any, oh, actually, I don't know if it's...
Sierra, could I?
We actually don't need these, I don't think.
Maybe, maybe one more modification of that. Well, because you can get a accessory dwelling by special, as of right, accessory uses.
As of right, accessory uses?
As of right, yeah. No, it is a list of as of right accessory uses.
Okay.
In, which don't require a special permit.
Okay. Does that sound good?
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to start, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Where's our gingerbread? All right, so I'm just going to slip this into the...
Cole told me I don't have to write anymore for the next three weeks.
I don't, I, why would you say that?
I don't know.
Who's on? Who's on? We have, we have to look.
Do we know? I'll do it, I don't mind.
You did?
I have the last one.
Okay. Well, which kind of brings me to, we're going to have to, until we get really, really set, don't you, yeah, you had, there was only one last week, right?
I gotta write that.
Spalding Ave?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the other thing Nicole did, just to make sure we never file anything late. So we're going to have to up our game here. That makes me a little nervous.
Neil will remind us.
Nicole kept you guys in line, I don't know.
You don't think so? Bayberry Road, okay. And that's going to be Mr. Tibbetts. They call me Mr. Tibbetts.
Oh, Mr. Tibbs.
Mr. Tibbs.
Put the inflection in, they call me Mr. Tibbs, as opposed to...
Mister. All righty, moving along.
Go ahead.
Second application, Philip and Michelle Abernatch of 24 Forest Ave, who have a master finding special permit of MDL 26 by the law, section 8810, to raise and reconstruct pre-existing non-conforming structures, namely, 1809 residential housing. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm attorney guard for the applicant, Phil Arbach, the property owner is to my left, and of course, our project engineer, you all know, is Greg Morse. As stated in the public notice before you this evening is a 48, Section 6, Clause 1, request for a finding to raise and reconstruct a single-family residential dwelling at 6 Crescent Avenue up on Second Cliff. You'll see from the plans that have been submitted that the, in the application that has been filed, that the lot itself is pre-existing non-conforming at 8,821 square feet, of course, we're not going to change that. The front yard setback is at 24.4 feet, and we are going to change that and make it conforming to 31.2 feet. As far as the lot width goes, there is a discrepancy in my application, which was based on the initial draft plan. The application before you indicates that the lot width will actually decrease from 78.5 feet to 78 feet, similar to the situation we had with the O'Donovan Project some time ago. Because the lot lines are not parallel, as we move the house back to maintain the front yard setback, it narrows the measurement through the building at that point. But the actual survey came in at 81.3 feet, existing to 80.6 feet proposed. So that's a decrease in the lot width of about .7 feet. I would suggest to the board that that is de minimis, and you could make the requisite finding, as you have made in the past, to that effect. The house itself is, the existing home, per the assessor's field card, is 2,718 square feet. The applicant proposes to raise and reconstruct that house and build a, a house that is of the first two floors, 2,447 square feet, compared to the 1906 square feet of the existing first two floors of the house, which represents a 28% increase over the main living space. The bylaw, of course, you know, talks about gross living space, so as far as the gross living space goes, including the basement, the first two floors, and then the attic, would be a 4,128 square foot gross living area, or floor area, I should say, not living area, but floor area, compared to the existing home, which is 27, 2,718 feet, resulting in a 52% increase. But I think it, it's fair to say to really compare the two homes by comparing the first two floors, which is essentially the living space, which represents a 28% increase. I think you can see from the site plan that Greg will go through in a moment, as well as the elevations that have been submitted, that this is, this is a house that's consistent with other houses in the area that have been renovated and built, rebuilt. Greg, if you would just take us through the plan.
The plan that we submitted, you'll see what we have here, we have the property lines going around, the lot itself, again, as Steve said, 8,823 square feet, it's in the residence three zoning district. There were no wetlands on this lot, there were no floodplain issues on this lot. The existing house sits up within the front yard setback, it's non-conforming, front yard setback at 24.4 feet. You'll see in bold the proposed house location. The proposed house location complies with the front yard, complies with both side yard and the rear yard setback, so we're pulling it back into the lot. As Steve said, you'll see that the lot lines taper in on the lot, so as we pull the house back, the lot width decreases. In this case, it's decreasing by .7 feet, which is just shy of nine inches. I also have, we have submitted with the application copies of the architectural plans. What I have here is just a quick on the elevations that were submitted. With those, you have the full copies of the architectural, including floor plans. But what you'll see, the bottom picture here represents the front of the house. You'll see it's a standard two-story house. It would be under the bylaws 35-foot height requirement. There's a deck off the back of the house. It would be probably a walkout basement in the back due to the topography on the land. If you had any questions on that, I would answer them. Otherwise, I think Steve ran through the numbers. Overall, gross square footage, it's a 52%, and I believe we're at 22, 22%? 28%.
28% as compared to the first two floors.
Right. The first two floors.
Neil?
And I just looked through it, I have no questions.
No, it seems like they kind of, they can't do anything regarding the lot width, it is what it is, the lot area, that can't change. And again, you have addressed where you could, the front setbacks, you know, going from, I think it was 24 to...
31.
31.2.
Right.
So that gets you... So, that gets you up the street some, so there is some movement. I take, I assume it's both town sewer, town water?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no septic plan or picture that we have to worry about there. That was it?
I'm just deciding whether I want to live here.
Trust me, I do this all the time.
Oh, it looks very nice. No, I think the, pulling the lot, house back on the lot is more beneficial than worrying about the, you know, less than one inch of lot width.
One foot, yeah.
One foot of lot width.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half inches of lot width, so that would be the only concern. All set? Maybe some people in the audience, though.
Yeah, it really, it looks like a very nice design. I think it'll be a nice improvement, without saying anything negative about our own house. But, you know, built in the 50s, and so, you know, you'll get the latest building codes, and looks like a nicely designed space. Is there anybody in the audience? Yes, ma'am? Would you just identify yourself?
I'm Noreen Rowley. I live at 9 Paget Beach Road. They have, my new neighbors are going to be right in my yard, more or less. I have no objection to a new house. I think it would be a vast improvement. My issue is, I want to make sure that I'm protected while they're doing all this construction. The house next door to them, which is reconstructed a few years ago, my yard was flooded out because they were draining everything into my yard. And I don't want the same thing to happen.
I'm sure you don't.
They should have, you know, hay bales or whatever they do. And also, I wanted to make a comment. The former neighbor, who we've had no issues with all these years, my house was there before this, but anyhow, they're under the assumption that they can dump their yard waste.
And they're under the assumption that what?
They can dump their yard waste into my yard.
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying the new people, the former neighbor was, and when I questioned her about it, she said, "Well, the new people can do that." I paid to have my yard waste taken away. And I do have a whole section of my yard. A wall separating our property has all the debris from up there, which has been deposited since last winter with all the storms. And I haven't had the means to get rid of it all, and I don't think I should. There's three or four trees there that belong up.
Right.
Did belong up in back.
Are the old people gone? You bought the house, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, it's too bad.
I don't want to have a bad family here anymore.
Right.
Mr. Reece, why don't, why don't we, my client has just informed me that he would be happy to take care of that debris.
I'm sorry, I'm quick.
As a new, as your new neighbor, he's saying that he'd like to start off on a clean slate and would like to help take care of that debris on his, the former owner's behalf.
I look forward to having a new neighbor.
Well, and you know, straight out, he's not responsible for it. So, for him to come forward and say, "I'm going to be a good neighbor, and I know this isn't my job, but I'm going to do that for you," is pretty awesome.
I think it is also. And when I came back from, I was away when we had that storm that departed all the trees, not one of the two houses up behind me called to say, "Too bad."
Yeah. Well, and I think that, you know, Neil works with people when they, when they're, when they're building, and there is, depending on what's going on back there, is requirements for hay bales or whatever. But I think obviously, right now, you know you've got a neighbor that you can talk to and say, you know, "This is a problem, and can, what can we do to prevent something?" And, and I think you're going to be in good hands.
I just have a question for Greg.
Is the neighbor down gradient of this property? Yeah. The whole property slopes to the back, so it sounds like it, yeah.
Yeah, if it goes from 40 to 36, so you've got about a 14-foot difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, flows to...
Paget is way below Crescent.
Down to Paget Beach, right down to Crescent, yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is, is this Sarah Haddam?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you are down gradient then. So, and you're not expanding the foot, you're not expanding the impervious area more than 25%?
I don't believe that we are, not with the house footprint or the...
So, you probably won't need a stormwater permit. And you, no conservation?
No.
Just check the state building code. The state building code has stormwater requirements, and I think at the very least, you'd put up 10 hay bales or something to prevent erosion.
We have a, one of the stocks.
Yeah. Well, we'll take, we will work with the building department, obviously, to take whatever precautions is necessary to prevent the runoff from going during construction until, obviously, the landscaping sets in to the neighborhood's yard.
Excellent. Welcome to the neighborhood. Anyone else? So, do we have a motion? Your turn, John.
Motion to grant the applicant at 6 Crescent Ave, special permit pursuant to section 6 of the drawn by law, section, what is it, 810.2, to raise and reconstruct pre-existing non-conforming structure, namely, a single-family residence. Based on the site plan dated, from 11/25/14.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
And I don't think we need to worry about the erosion control. That'll be taken care of.
No, I'll, I'll buy it.
I'll talk to you later.
All right.
My neck, I wanted to add something. We have a stormwater bylaw, if you increase impervious area, which you're not doing. We also have, it's also taken care of by conservation inter-wetlands.
Right.
There are provisions in the state building code regarding stormwater, which are all resolved by the time they go through conservation and/or stormwater. In this case here, we'll be looking for a site plan showing stormwater controls, so when you prepare the plan for the building permit.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Would you like to do the decision?
Of course I would.
No, I mean, to draft the decision for our consideration.
Would you like to draft the decision? That is correct.
I could vote, too, if you want.
We occasionally change it.
I will, gladly, sure.
It'd be appreciated.
For the viewing public, it's always helpful if we have an applicant with Steve's experience to be able to put together a draft decision, because we're all doing this on a part-time basis, and sometimes life gets in the way, so it can speed things along.
We know you're not going to miss a deadline.
We hope so.
Thank you very much.
Do you guys like the copies of this, too, if you need?
Since Mr. Guard's doing that, I don't need this, so.
I might have the original for the test. All right.
Good luck.
Good luck, Merry Christmas.
Merry holidays.
And good luck with your new neighbors.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Noreen.
She'll be baking cookies.
Now she's your friend.
It's a reminder how little there, how little it takes to be a good neighbor.
You know, and I don't even mind if this is on, and applicants, but even if it's on, if applicants would talk to their neighbors before they come and speak with us, so often everyone's, everyone understands, there's no apprehension, there's no concern about what the project is.
As, we could just go on real quick. We did have on our agenda the ZBA rules and regulations. Nicole and I were not able to get together to put that together before she left, and since we're missing two board members anyway, so I would suggest we move to continue that.
Move to continue that discussion, I second it.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No other business? Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second?